Welcome to Thinking Green. I'm Rana. And I think everyone who's watching knows that we have a municipal election coming up. And probably from now for the next six weeks until Election Day, I'll probably have most of my shows focused on candidates who are not Row A candidates. There might be a couple of them who sneak in, but for the most part, about a month ago, I had a couple of guests from minor parties, even more minor than the Green Party. But now we're talking about candidates on the ballot. So my guests today are Erin Eide, who is running for the third time, right, on the Republican line, and Grandma Dot Ames, who is running for the first time, but who decided, I think, two years ago on Election Day, coming out of her polling spot, that we needed new blood in our elections. So welcome both of you.
Thank you so much for having us, Rana.
Yeah, thank you.
So I guess I'll give each of you a chance to just introduce yourself and talk a little bit about why you're running for election to City Council, which is a tough job with very little compensation. Anyway, I've gotten to the point I feel like I'll never run again for something like that. But I admire anyone who is in that chase. So maybe Erin start first, and then Dot, why you're running, what motivates you, and what the main issues you're trying to address are.
Absolutely. So I'm running for my third time now. I've been a New Londoner for 15 years now. I've been at EB the whole time. I moved here from, I guess I went to school in New York. I grew up in New Jersey. I fell in love with the city when I was house hunting, when I was actually commuting from New Haven every day, which was tough because my first job out of college was in Milford. So I was trying to find the perfect house. I didn't want to buy another, I didn't want to rent another apartment. I wanted to find a place I could settle down. And I kept coming back to New London. And like a lot of people, I saw a lot of potential in the city. And come 2021, after being here for 11 years, I decided, okay, I'm tired of people saying it's ready for the change. There's potential here still. I'm like, let's just go and make it happen, right? I feel like our city administration is so focused on helping support a few well-connected people and giving out, you know, tax abatements to big developers, but not to the little people that are trying to buy houses or supporting, you know, private equity funds that are going to buy up a bunch of houses in turn into Airbnbs. We've stopped making New London about New London. Our city government doesn't seem to have a challenge, and they focus on supporting themselves. So I think it's time to, you know, make a change. And I'm also raising my daughter here. And I'm tired of New London schools. I spent 12 years volunteering at the high school. And progressively, I saw the quality and the involvement from the students get lower and lower in the 12 years since I got there, especially through the COVID, when I couldn't compete. You know, I was running, I was running the first robotics team at the high school. And so all volunteer position wasn't getting paid anything. In fact, I was losing thousands of dollars and, you know, spending hundreds and hundreds of hours working on the team. But I couldn't compete with a kid that had to stay home and play video games because they even have real schoolwork to do. Our performance at the schools is abysmal. And, you know, part of the thing I'm frustrated with is like, look at the last squabble over the, over the school budget. We're not even looking at real, real issues. And we're focused so much on, you know, 4% or 6% kind of things on raises. And we're not focusing on attainment and holding the administration accountable. So I want to make sure we can get to that point where we can actually start challenging our administrators and rewarding them if we get better, start rewarding our administrators, but also not just giving them a blanket raise for the sake of giving themselves a raise. So I want to make sure there's a school district that my daughter can go to in a few years.
And Dot?
So, wow. I didn't grow up here, but I was born in Danbury. I grew up in the backwoods of Maine on a big old farm. But I came to Connecticut, to New London, all the time, a couple times, three times a year. And my great aunt and grandmother used to take me to Bates Woods to see Rocky and several other animals that had names. And I loved it here. And I always wanted to live in New London. So in 1980, I moved here. Hands down, I came here with little to nothing. I was not in the best place that a person could be. But I came here, I had my baby on my hip, and got an apartment on Nob Hill, and proceeded from there to go to Mitchell College, got my associate's degree, had gone forward doing social work. New London, even from the very beginning as a child, had so much rich history and rich culture for me. I saw galleries and art and music everywhere. In the 80s, it was so abundant. And I wanted to be part of it. Then, like Rana said, a couple of years ago, I've always voted, since the minute I turned 18, I voted, never voting across a line. Because why? Know your candidates. Know who your candidates are. Know their name. Hopefully, know their face and know a little something about them. I walked into my polling place and overheard a couple of City Council members having a conversation. And they were assured of their position on the council because people would vote across the line and they would continue to have their jobs. My brain did a backflip and I was like, nope, nope. And I ran out the door and I told Rana, I'm ready. She had asked me to run for anything for years. She had said, just come run for this, come run for that, do this, do that. And I was like, I'm ready. And since then, we've been being prepped on how to be a politician. I don't think I'll ever be a politician, but I have some very things, some things that I'm very passionate about in the city. I'm historically invested in this city. I believe in what this city began as, what it did when Benedict Arnold burnt it down, how it recovered from that. I am invested in knowing the history with the polio epidemic that killed so many children. I'm invested, the architecture here and the history that goes as far back as Tiffany with his stained glass. I'm also extremely invested in what's going on with the school board and the things that are going on with money. I'm devastated that human beings felt that little human beings should be negated and not kept safe by safe crossing guards, and that it's more important to get rid of them and give other people money. That devastates me. I have a great granddaughter in our school system. And if my great granddaughter had to walk to school with no crossing guards, I would be aggressively seeking to get new crossing guards that cost enough to keep my kids safe. There's other things. The waterfront, the things that go on on the waterfront are amazing. And they bring money to this city fiscally. To have them go away or be changed around is hard. And it should be talked about and voted on diplomatically. It shouldn't be done behind people's backs. I want to see the green spaces in our city stay green. I've watched our park Riverside over there just happen and be beautiful because, really, because of a few people that invested in making that park a place where kids could go play and people could enjoy nature and see the water. I'm here because I want to change the stuff that's going on. I don't want to see any more corrupt people running my city. Yeah, my city. I live here. I've been here since 1980. I'm not going anywhere. I want to see my city thrive. I want people to live here, to love here, to play here, and to grow here. That's why I'm running.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about the state the city is in now. Since 2021, we have 15 elected positions in New London. We don't, as most towns in Connecticut do, have some kind of minority party representation in their charter. We don't. And so it's become, I've lived in New London since 1994. That's when we bought our house. And I've seen the group of elected officials get less and less diverse. And I'm not talking about superficial diversity, you know, different ethnicities or different skin tones. But I've never seen it worse in terms of so many elected officials voting as a block rather than thinking about solutions independently. So I do have a couple of sample ballots that I wanted to show before we talk about issues, so that voters have an idea of who's going to be on the ballot. The lottery was held last Friday. And if we could show that, I think several voters don't really know who the candidates are. Maybe they know the Democrats because the primary took so much attention. But they certainly don't know who's on the other lines. So we'll try to see that. You know, you two and John Sadie are all in the same column.
Nice.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, okay, if you want to vote lines, vote straight down. We got that.
That's one of the biggest things that people understand. I think the mantra of vote Row A all the way that the Democrats have been chanting at the polling places for the 15 years I've lived here has made people think that you have to vote all across a line or that the columns matter. And our ballot is set up intentionally to make it look like you're competing across the columns, and you're not. It's any seven, up to any seven you want to vote for. You can vote for none if you want to. You can vote for one if you want to. You can just vote, you can show up and vote for just the Board of Ed if you want to and leave the city completely blank if you don't like any candidate.
And actually, the Democrats' primary, I think, might help us get that message across into the general because there was a lot of education from the Line B candidate in the primary that you don't need to just vote straight across the line. And I have to tell you, historically, in 2003, I believe, when we had the old lever voting machines, which were formatted just like our paper ballots, one year, and I think it was 2003, at about 6:15 in the morning, I was at Harper School, and someone voted and they wanted to vote for two candidates in the same column. And it was locked out as if they were head to head. And they ended up, they're switching to paper ballots. It was a big mess. And the Green Party and the Republicans, who were led by Bob Grills and John Hunziker at the time, filed a suit with the State Election Enforcement Commission. The ballots weren't all counted for, I think, the next day. It was a huge mess. Bob, who is off on the side, was one of the people observing the count.
Yep.
And it was just a huge mess. So in reality, in the lever machines, sometimes they were programmed wrong. And even the people doing the, the programming for these elections where the words say, you know, vote for up to seven, but the layout screams out, people in the same column are head to head.
Yeah. And I, so I, in elections, I'm non-municipal elections when I haven't been running, I'm an assistant registrar. I'm usually at Harbor Elementary. So I've been, now it's going on nine years or so, I've been an assistant registrar at Harbor. So I would say I get between 20 and 50 people depending on if it's presidential or not that have to go, you know, in addition to the ones that just don't have their IDs or change addresses that think they messed up their ballots. Like, I've had people go, oh, I voted for these two people, or I voted for the same person twice on different lines, or I voted for, you know, it's cool. One, you don't have to show me that. But like, two, you can, yeah, you can, you can pick people from different parties. But so many people come up and go, oh, I didn't know you couldn't do that. Or I have to vote the whole row across.
Yeah. In fact, we had one person back, I don't know, at least 10 years ago, who came to our after-party. And the person who is a very educated person in New London said, I voted for all Greens, even though it meant I couldn't vote on any other lines.
See, we need to educate, we need to educate our public. First of all, we need to educate them that it's really easy to register to vote. I'll help you. If you need help registering to vote, call me. Second of all, we need to educate people about why the lines are set up the way that they are, and that it can't just be a line or a name. Look for faces. Look for people you know and trust. Look for people that are active in your community. If you don't see these people out doing the festivals, doing the galleries, shopping in our city, if you don't see people engaging with one another in our city, don't vote for them. Know your faces. You don't have to vote like this. You can vote like this. And that's the fun part. Look for faces that have come and knocked on your door and talked to you and engaged with you. And we'll still do that once they're elected.
Yeah. And another trend we have seen in recent years is that incumbents often do not bother to show up for forums and debates.
Yeah. I mean, the Democrats were told to boycott in 2023. They, I mean, I talked with, Jeff Hart was the only one, he was coming from the Board of Ed and going to the City Council. And I'm on the Projects and Programs Committee with him for the Board of Ed, or at least when he was a Board of Ed member. And I was calling him out, like, you can come to the debate? And he goes, oh, I don't know. And then the day of the debate, we could see who shows up. He was the only Democrat to show up. And he was the only new person. He was the only non-incumbent. All the incumbents boycotted the debate and the mayor.
And I think that trend started in 2019. There was poor attendance at the Neighborhood Alliance debate. And then COVID came and it messed everything up.
I mean, we had debates in 2021. I mean, Hearing Youth Voices did one. Actually, we had more debates in '21 than we had in '23 because the League of Women Voters, the Democrats said they'd only do it if the League of Women Voters.
That is exactly the case.
And then they didn't offer one. I kept asking them, when are we going to do the debate? When are we going to do the debate? I think honestly, it's because they see that if they let, if the voters get Republicans and Greens in front of them, they may lose voters that way. There's nothing to be gained. I mean, the system is set up exactly how it's intended, and it works perfectly the way it does.
Yeah.
The ballot, the debate system, yes.
But then, when I go to City Council meetings, I see that some of the councillors now don't know how to appropriately address the public while they're in office. And really, debates, especially those that are hosted by groups or people that aren't a match for us individually, it's great practice for how to really interact with the public. If you don't do it, then you're likely going to not do a good job at it when you're in office. So I just want to quickly show the Board of Ed ballot. We're not going to really talk much about Board of Ed candidates. But just so people get an idea, the Democrats do have a full ballot. Republicans, Greens. You'll note, and this is unusual for the Green Party, we did endorse both Elaine Maynard Adams and Jeff Hart. We had made that offer when they were both rejected from the line.
Yep.
And decided not to withdraw. They were still willing, and we decided not to withdraw the offer just because they emerged from primary season on the ballot.
And doing okay.
So, but also in Board of Ed as well as for, for City Council, having one party, it doesn't work well. Too many decisions can be made too easily outside of the public eye.
And that seems to be one of the problems that's going on at City Hall. Things are being talked about and discussed behind closed doors, and maybe not even in a situation that could be a public forum and isn't. And we see, we see decisions being made and then publicized. That's not the way the city's supposed to work. We're supposed to be able to look at what the situation is, let the public know and talk about it if they want, and then vote on it. And it shouldn't just be because we're Republican, Democrat, Green, whatever. It should be because the things are ethically, fiscally, ecologically, and morally, right? That's why we should vote on things.
Well, you know, the Freedom of Information Act exempts party caucuses from public disclosure, which is fine. I mean, I've been at Green Party meetings and we don't, if we're in a strategy session, we don't necessarily want it to be public. But that isn't a problem if you have a mix of parties in office.
Right.
But as soon as that one party has a supermajority, then you know that the real discussions happen behind closed doors.
Oh, 100%. You see that at the council every week. I think I went back to the last year, so through 2024. John Sadie made like 95% of all the discussions to pull things off the consent agenda. He was the only councillor that actually said, let's talk about this in public. So I mean, other, a few, I'm sure there's a couple examples, Jeff with the Board of Ed budget and things like that. But for the most part, you know, things that they get decided before, in closed doors, they get decided before they go to the meeting. They go there, they try to have a half an hour meeting, they're on their phones checking the emails or whatever. The mayor is sitting there on his phone the whole time. And, okay, good, good, good. This is pro forma. And let's just, you know, get through this and go home.
And you probably appreciate somewhere I saw posted, I don't know, a meme or something that they said, you know, so many people in public office are lawyers. Instead of being lawyers, we get more done if they were engineers.
I hope that's the case, but yeah.
Well, I really do think that we need more engineers in the mix, whatever. I'm not saying the mayor has to be an engineer or can't be a lawyer. But I think when we have the mix of elected officials, that it's a good idea to have different professional backgrounds. Because sometimes I think when the lawyers are in charge, you get more focused on the little details and not much on a big vision.
Well, I mean, think about by, by training and by trade, right? Engineers are trained to get things done and focus on end results. And, you know, I went to school for engineering, I have three engineering degrees. I started adding them like Voltron during the recession, right? So, but, you know, we tend to try to get things done. We also are not the greatest at public speaking or networking. Lawyers are very good at that. So in America and the West, you have to get elected first. And that's one of the harder things, to put yourself out there and take the flak and take the abuse. And, you know, I would very happily wish that like our City Council was ran by the seven smartest people in the city. And I could stay home with my daughter and my wife after work and, you know, live my life. But that's not the case. We're being ran by a few people that have, that have a desire to maintain power and a bunch of, you know, for lack of a better term, a bunch of the C students that are, they're just voting up, down on them. And they're not, they're not causing any trouble. They're not causing a headache. And when they do offer resistance, they get thrown out of the party. They get ostracized.
And that is what happens. And just for the record, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not an engineer. But I do have a master's degree in what I think is one of the most important parts of keeping a city together. I'm a social worker. I make people be social and live social and have a good social life. And sitting in the City Council meeting, I can advocate for what's right for our community. And I don't think that has anything to do with engineering or being a lawyer. I think that has to do with caring for your friends and your neighbors and your tribe.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm all about. I'm going to, I'm going to run for City Council as long as I have to, to make people know that kindness is a superpower.
Well, we're going to start talking about issues soon. But I wanted to let people know, we do have the phone set up.
Woo-hoo!
I might be really incompetent at using it because we're in a new space and a new phone, new setup. But the phone number is on the screen, but I'll read it out, 860-445-7499. If you would like Erin or Dot or both of them to address an issue that's been nagging at you, please call.
Absolutely.
And if you don't get to call right now, you can just let us know and we'll pass it along and figure out a different way. But we are set up for phone calls. So I wanted to talk about some issues. And we talked a little bit about the mechanics of our government here that is, seems to get more autocratic every year.
Yep.
And less participatory. But I don't know. I guess I'll ask each of you, what do you think is the main thing you would personally like to bring to that, to the council, not exactly agenda in the, in the literal sense, but what the council sees as its job?
You want to go first?
Sure. I believe that the City Council that is at this time in office is not understanding what its job is. I believe that the City Council's job is to see to it that the safety, the fiscal being, and the community togetherness of our city is important, and that we make laws and rules and change budget lines and whatever that will enhance and feed the good things going into the city. Is this something that's going to help this city fiscally? If it's not, why are we voting for it? Is this something that's going to help bring the community together or help the community grow in a healthy way? If it's not, why are we voting for it? Why is it even on the table? And if we're changing budget line items, why are we doing it if it's going to take money out of our city, if it's not going to help our underprivileged, if it's not going to help with housing? Housing is such a huge issue nowadays with so many people without housing. And if you haven't worked down at the Homeless Hospitality Center, don't talk to me about housing. Don't. Because I know what's going on there. And it's our elderly and our vets that are hurting the most. And why are our vets without housing? Anyway, I get off on another tangent. But the fact is that I don't think our City Council has been out in our city. I believe they stay in their little circles and in their little homes. I don't think they know what's going on in our city. So they don't know how to address the real issues that need to be changed and talked about and brought to the table.
Okay.
So I talk about being an engineer, but I'll admit, I've spent the last few years as a program office guy at EB. We have a saying, proper planning prevents piss poor performance. And the one thing the city has is zero sense of planning.
We don't even have a planner.
We don't even have a city planner anymore, right? We, our planning is basically, let's go recruit people that we can give kickbacks to, to go build something here. We'll give them, we'll give them property at a fire sale price to develop on. And so one of the biggest frustrations I've had with the city is that, just quality of life, right? There's trying to knock on the doors. You'll see sidewalks that are destroyed.
Yep.
One place. And then you'll have a section of sidewalk that's been paved three times in the last two years because you did a gas, you did a water inspection, you did gas replacement. Montauk Avenue, I think, got ripped up three times in three years or nine, four years in the late 2010s, early 2020s. It's insane. So I want to bring like a 50-year plan, right? The city is going to be around in 2075. Let's, let's treat it like it's going to be. Our City Council doesn't seem to know what they're going to do in 2026. And so if we actually start developing a long-term plan of all the maintenance and utilities we have to fix, and don't just say, oh, it's not us as VLR, or it's not us as EverSource, work with them. Come up with a plan that we can execute to. And then to your point, we can spend our money wisely because we can plan, we can plan multiple years ahead. You know, in the shipbuilding world, we, we work off of what they call the 30-year shipbuilding plan. The Navy says this is where we think we're going to be for the next 30 years. And we can go develop things and hire people and start careers and start a life here in Connecticut based off the fact that we have 30 years. Whereas New London won't give you six months. And that's been like the greatest frustration for me and why I get so frustrated with some of the processes that the city goes through, which is basically whoever comes, we'll just give them what of all the, the maintenance and utilities we have to fix, and don't just say, "Oh, it's not us as VLR or it's not us as ever source." Work with them. Come up with a plan that we can execute to. And then to your point, we can spend our money wisely because we can plan, we can plan multiple years ahead. You know, in the shipbuilding world, we, we work off of what they call the 30-year shipbuilding plan. The Navy says this is where we think we're gonna be for the next 30 years. And we can go develop things and hire people and, and start careers and start a life here in Connecticut based off the fact that we have 30 years. Whereas New London won't give you six months. And that's been like the greatest frustration for me and why I get so frustrated with some of the, the processes that the city goes through, which is basically whoever comes, we'll just give them whatever they ask for. You see in the council all the time. You have some vendor come there and go, "I need approval to go build on this parcel here," or whatever. And they say, "Sure, why not?" You know, "And we'll give you tax abatement on that for no reason."
Yeah. And I feel what you're saying on planning and zoning. Next year, we're going to be starting to work on the updated Plan of Conservation and Development. And I was on the commission, as a new commissioner, when we did the plan 10 years ago. And it was so frustrating to me that we did not seem to be able to look 10 years into the future when they were talking about infrastructure, energy. There was no consideration just to get half a sentence saying, "Well, while expanding our natural gas network in the city, we will also look at sources of renewable energy." I mean, that was all. And it just seemed like, like 10, in 10 years, this is really gonna seem out of date. So, as we started again, you know, I, I think just getting a long-term plan.
Yep.
Even if you don't have all the, the details, knowing what your goals are beyond like the next election cycle.
So, that's a perfect example, right? The 10-year plan, I read through that when you sent it to me two years ago, right?
Yeah.
That's a, the city hired us to put a report together and we wrote a report 10 years ago and said, "We're done, right? This has to be a living plan. This has to be something that we manage and we maintain." A 50-year plan should be revised every six months for the next 50 years, right? There should be 100 revisions by the time you get to 2075. This is not a, you're done with it. This is a, you're working from where you actually know what's going on because you don't know what you don't know, right? So, if you know what, if you lay out what you think is gonna happen, have to happen, and then it changes, you're only changing that 5% that's changing, not coming up with the rest of it as, as you go. And it's a, it's a big problem that the city has. It's one of the reasons we can't get out of our own way.
I also think that, adding to that is one of the things that's the problem with doing a 50-year plan is that people are inherently nowadays lazy. We've been made lazy by the things that are just given to us and thrown at us. And people don't want to do something six months from now. "I've already done it. I don't wanna do it again. I don't wanna do it again in two years. Let's do it. Let's get it done. Let's put it on the shelf and other people will follow it." That's lazy. Nobody wants to get on the city council and work. They wanna get on the city council because it gives them a name.
Well, I, I think that, that maintenance is very like unromantic. You know, it just seems tedious. And ribbon cuttings are kind of exciting. But, yeah.
Yeah, it's one of my biggest frustrations. Toby May, brand-new park, right?
Right.
And I take my daughter there with my wife. My wife's there like multiple times a week. I go there maybe once or twice, you know, a month or whatever with her when I get a chance on the weekend. But there's things, the bells have been cut, the hammers are missing. All these things are going broken. It's not even two years old. Everyone from the city council is there for the ribbon cutting, but no one's fixed anything on there. And like I literally went to my truck, got my tools out and fixed the, you know, some of the, the, the pipes because I was like, "Oh, I have the tools. I can fix this." The city's never gonna do this. I'll just go and do it myself, kinda thing, right? And it's just, it's frustrating that like this, the city doesn't think that. So, actually, one of the points, when I was saying, I was on the Projects and Programs Committee for the Board of Ed. I worked with Miguel Gauthier and Brian Doughty before he resigned on putting together that plan. So, when the, the high school and the middle school projects were wrapping up, one of the things was the maintenance and everything, right? So, working with Miguel Gauthier and saying, "Hey, what's their..." And that's not a long plan, it's a seven-year plan, but it's all the maintenance. But you know what? When the school budget, the, the level, the, the flat funding, level loaded, you know, "We're gonna keep the funding the same next year." I think the Board of, I think the, the maintenance budget was cut something like 40-something percent. It was just under 50%. And you go, "Well, that's not flat funding. That's something else that's taking up all the money." And, you know, "We're gonna lose ADA compliance on the elevators this year because we can't do inspections because they cost a good amount of money to maintain elevators and you do the inspections. But hey, it's a, it's a big ticket on a small budget, right? So, let's cut that kinda stuff."
And once again, forgetting that our kids are more important than any of it. And they're not getting what they need because of that.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's frustrating, right? And I think there's a cliche that Republicans always say they wanna like run the city or government like a business. And I don't necessarily believe in that. I do think we should run it like we're fiduciary, right? We have a fiduciary responsibility to maintain and manage a thing in the long term. And there's a big difference from that. And I think a lot of people struggle to realize that. So, we're not in it to make money. We're in it to get the best investment out of, out of what we put in. And the two biggest symbols of investment in like, especially for the middle class, the dividing line between the work class and middle class is education and homeownership.
Right.
And those are two things that New London, for whatever reason, seems like our city government tries to make it fail. Like, I don't get why.
They work hard at it.
They work hard to keep the education down and then the housing down. I just don't get it.
And you touched on, you know, return on investment as being, to me, should drive the budget process more than actual, the actual numbers of what's coming in.
Yep.
You know, if you have a house and your roof is leaking or you could use some new furniture and fixing the roof will cost you more money than replacing your shabby furniture, but down the road, it's gonna be a way better investment. And I don't think, you know, you mentioned the fire sale on property. And it's frustrating to me how many city properties get sold to developers for a dollar.
And then they get a tax break on top of it.
Yeah, then they all pay taxes.
Three tax breaks, actually, because there's the National Opportunity Act. There's the Enterprise Opportunity Zones, Enterprise Zones, and the City and Town Development Act.
You know, for the fourth one, anyone that got the ARPA funding the last few years.
Oh, that's...
Yeah, the federal funding came into the city and anyone that brought a, that was on the ins, the ins with the, the city council and the mayor got up, you know, under 10 grand was just a check and anything over had to be a rubber stamp by the city council. It was frustrating. You saw these places, these, you know, private property and, and personal businesses that were getting 50, under $200,000 worth of, of city funding.
I saw, just on Facebook, that Fresh New London has their, their walk, garden walk this week, coming weekend. And I was, they also put out a notice that they can no longer use the parking lot next to the Fresh Garden because the new owner of the Martin Center is closing that access to them. The, the Fresh Garden on Mercer Street will have to be accessed from, from, was it Williams Street?
Are they blocking the...
I don't know exact, I haven't been there.
The senior center's still at the Martin Center, right?
Yeah.
So, the senior center's still open.
So, I think that part can be accessed, but there's no connection maybe between the parking lot and the Fresh Garden. I haven't been there to, to see it. I just saw, just this week, an announcement there's on-street parking and you can enter, you can enter from Williams Street. So, but if you look at Vision Appraisal, the city sold the property for a dollar and the person who purchased it did do some work on the property and sold it a few years later for $7 million.
Yeah.
And I feel like, I don't know, why do we undervalue what we have? What we have is really great. And I don't think we should be selling it to anyone for a dollar, right? We went through our whole community garden fight. And I'm not against affordable housing. But from a financial point of view, the garden was on a parcel that was not polluted, which is unusual in an old city. And they will be spending, the, the place they're moving us to, and I'm so glad that they agreed to move us and not just get rid of the community garden because people need housing, but they need food also. But the, the place we're getting moved to is going to need remediation. And it's just like, things are just being done in a very expensive way, needlessly.
But they're not thinking about it fiscally.
Right, the whole parcel, really, I mean, the garden does not make adequate use of the parcel where it is currently because it's a third of a parcel, of the parcel. But to me, thinking about food security.
Right, it's so important.
That particular parcel could have its food production capability expanded. You could put a greenhouse on it. You could put a food, a fruit tree forest on there. There are some areas that are too steep for actually doing it, garden beds. But to find a, a plot in the city that's not polluted and to move everything, spend thousands of dollars. And I think there are probably other sites where we can build affordable houses. And I'd be interested, and I don't know if this is legal or not, but all these apartment buildings that are being built, I'd be interested in knowing if they're at full occupancy. Because do we have a lack of housing? Or do we have a mismatch between the type of housing we have and that type of housing we need?
Right, right. And I think you see that very boldly, even on the business side with the whole Shaw's Cove thing. There are so many empty offices. They wanted to put that, I remember when Shaw's Cove wasn't built yet and there was a big fight about it. And now you walk through and there are empty offices in every building. And then there's this big new apartment building and you can tell just from the lights that many of them are empty because they cost too much.
So, like you, to your point, like the city has all these buildings we own and then we still are renting. The Board of Ed moved to Shaw's Cove because they...
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, it's on the second floor of, I forgot, Unit 3 or whatever it is next to.
Yep.
But, and, but I think the beam right next to Shaw's Cove is, is full occupancy because one of the things I was frustrated about was their 20-year tax abatement doesn't start till they get their certificate of occupancy, but they're fully occupied.
That's the one on Bank Street, right?
No.
No.
The one... That's the one on Howard Street.
On Howard Street.
The one down by Captain, Captain Scott's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But they, 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 I don't know if they, currently, but they took them years to get their certificate of occupancy, which is when the clock starts on their abatement. But they were collecting, they were, so they got cheap land that the city eminent domained and they're not paying taxes on it until they get occupancy. But they, they sold all the apartments, were collecting rent checks from everyone. So, they're profiting off something. Before they even, before they're supposed to live there, they had people living there, collecting rent, rent from all these people. And then they're going, "Oh, well, it's not ready to live in so we, we don't have to start paying, we don't have to start the clock on not paying taxes yet."
Shady behavior.
Yeah, that's what's very frustrating.
Shady behavior. That's one of the things that needs to go in this city, is shady behavior. Cut it out.
And the owners are not local.
Right, of course they're not.
They're not local companies, so the money, the rent money is mostly not getting reinvested in the city. So, you're not having the doll, you know, if you have a, there are local landlords who have a few houses or a few buildings. But the rents they're getting are being circulated in our town.
Oh, yeah.
There are lawyers, there are accountants, there, you know, there are supplies there getting purchased, if not in New London, in this area.
Yep.
And when the owner is in Pennsylvania or farther, the, the money is just leaving.
Yep.
Yes, that's one of the things I wanna do is level the playing field, I guess. Now, I guess it puts me on a, you know, the outs to some of the Republicans, but offering a tax abatement to individual owners, right? So, if you are owner occupied and it's your first, like a first-time homebuyer credit. So, when I moved here, I benefited from the Connecticut First-Time Homebuyer Credit, which was for distressed urban environment. So, New London was one of them. If I lived and worked in New London, I was, I was working in New London when we first bought the facility here, I got 20 grand to put towards the house. And I don't wanna give the money upfront to the homeowner, but I wanna give them the same tax abatement. If, we're not playing on a fair playing field where these big hedge funds and, and private equity firms get these tax, 20-year tax abatements. I'm not saying give a 20-year tax abatement. I'm saying give them like 20, $30,000 to fix up their house. If you buy your own house and you prove that you're, you put the permits in and you prove that you're gonna go do the work to fix up your own house and you live there and you're a first-time homebuyer, you, you're not paying taxes on that first $30,000 you owe the city.
I think that's a good idea.
And in that way, it, at least levels the playing field because right now, the city's giving, giving things to these big companies, but the rest of us are fighting, you know, the rest. I know, I was talking with a 26-year-old that was helping, that I was talking to on my campaign. And I invited him over, he was, you know, and I told him, and he goes, "This is the first time I stepped foot in someone's, in an actual house in New London." I go, "What are you talking about?" He goes, "Everyone I know is a renter." I'm like, "Really?" I'm like, "This is the first, how long you been here? Like three years, four years?" I'm like, "You've never been in a owner occupied house." I bought my house when I was 22, my first guy did a new one because back then, everyone was like, "Don't buy a house anywhere, new one."
Right.
I bought mine, but, but now, you know, he's like, "Oh, it's..." And our homeownership is just diminishing and, and it's just gonna keep people in a, you know, cycle of paying rent checks instead of building equity.
And I know that two years ago, you and I sat down and talked about land value tax because one of the problems too is that if people buy a New London old house, very often it does need work. And as soon as you fix it up, your taxes go up. And it seems sort of backwards. If people are investing in their house and making it worth more, then why should we be punishing them by raising their taxes?
Doubling our taxes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but...
And people who let houses just, you know, fall apart, they don't pay much in taxes. So, I, I, I had a chart I did once, four properties near a home in Hempstead Street. Now, the ones, the Victorian that the Barretts fixed up, an empty lot. One kinda typical, two-family in good condition, but not fancy. And one really, really rundown slum landlord house. And land value tax wouldn't have like made the, the person with the empty lot or the rundown house pay more, but it helped close the gap so that people, people's being punished for fixing their places up wasn't quite so stark.
The, the biggest pushback on land values would go, "Oh, then my whole neighborhood's gonna turn into high-rise apartments," right?
Yeah.
And you solve that with zoning. That's an easy fix, right? And then the other one is, what about X business, right? What about the, you know, the ferry that has 17 acres and is paying, you know, effectively a quarter of what I'm paying on my house in terms of property tax?
And they're in the most prime location in the city.
On prime downtown waterfront real estate, yeah.
They have navigable access to deep-water port.
Yep.
They're right in the downtown and, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a net, there's a net value to the city of New London to have the ferries coming here. I'm not saying we should try to force them out with that, but again, you can solve these things with zoning, with smart and intelligent zoning.
And valuing the resource we have. They could move if we placed them out, but there aren't that many places they could move to because there aren't that many places that have, have that port. So, it, it is a balancing act. We shouldn't be just so thrilled to have anyone set foot here that we give them, you know, everything they want. But, you know, we, we also don't have to stiff them. You know, we, we don't have to punish them for being here.
Right.
But there's a balance that we seem to be missing that tilts towards too often undervaluing the resources we really do offer.
Or not even, not even looking at what we have for resources. I think that many of the people that are making the decisions I think that many of the people that are making the decisions aren't looking at the whole picture. They're looking at what, what kind of money can we make? What kind of friends can we keep? And how do we make this look good for us? How do I make my legacy stay? How do I make myself go down in history? Not how do I make New London go down in history? How do I make the city stick out on the world map, which is where it should stick out? But how do I make me go down in history? And I think we need to change that.
I do have a list here. I wanted to put it up. When Shanice Austin ran for city council two years ago, she put together a scorecard to help.
Yep.
She, nine things that the policymakers should think about when making decisions. And I don't know if you two have any thoughts on which things were particularly weak on or which issues here are, oh my gosh, we have five minutes?
Holy moly.
Oh, we'll have to do a repeat in a few weeks.
I'm down with that.
Yeah. So what do you think about having a set way to, you know, evaluate all these projects?
So when you sent this to me, I went through it with my quote red pen. It's actually a purple pen and writes in black. But I went through it, and I was looking at the things that were on there that I don't feel are being addressed. And I, you know how I feel about the history. Long-term impact is a real issue. We're not looking at what's going to happen in the long term at all. I don't think that we take stock in the environmental impact that's happening on. Bates Woods is a huge example of that. You know, what was done, I'm not even going to start. I'm just not. And the, the fact that community engagement, I'm just going to say, thank you Barbara Neff, because without her doing what she does, our community would be dead and flatlined. But we need to invest in our people, our community, our tribe. That's what we need to pay attention to. How are we taking care of our people? All of them. White, black, gay, trans, homeless, the whole bit.
Hungry, yes.
The hungry. Let's take care of our people. And that really needs to be a top priority, going from young to old, and then dealing with the middle. Because our elderly are in big trouble, and our children are being neglected.
I think we should recognize too that when we take care of our residents, we're also making it a good place for tourists. But if we're focusing on our tourists, we're not necessarily.
We're not taking care of our residents at all.
Necessarily taking care of our residents.
I mean, we are a multi-million dollar business, right? We have to be able to keep our, the salesmanship, right? Mystic is a small city with less to offer, I think, in terms of the people and culture than New London, but they have a much better PR firm than we do. Yet, on Saturday, we were down, I went with the wife and the kid, and we were walking down the city pier, and we went to go check out the cruise ship that was here. And while we're there, there was a homeless guy with all his stuff pushing it on a bicycle, like it wasn't riding, but pushing it, had a bucket, and then went next to the conics container and started defecating down on the city pier. Like, that's not a good show if you're coming here on a cruise ship. What do you think those people are going to remember? Like, and like, and it's, it's frustrating. Now, that's the, we're not taking care of our people, that we're, you know, we're letting that, that kind of thing happen. It, it works both ways, right?
It does.
It also is a regional problem. Like, we cannot address that individually. We could house 100 homeless people, and Groton will send us 100 born in, in next year. And it becomes, it becomes a problem unless the other communities in the area start to support us and, and we work with them.
Right.
To address these problems regionally. And that's where, that's where we really have to get to the, the state level. But as a city council, we're not pushing back, right? We're not bringing legislative, I don't know when the last time no one brought legislation to Hartford was that supported us, or Martha Marks brought legislation to Hartford that supported New London at a regional level.
And that is huge, and it isn't just New London, it's all the urban hubs.
Yep.
In Connecticut are subsidizing the suburbs around them.
100%, yeah. We don't have functioning counties, and our, and our cities become a depository for the people that need services.
Well, and only because I know that it's happening because I'm there, I've been there. There are several organizations that when people are discharged or let out of their facilities, they are brought to New London.
Oh, 100%.
And dropped off with no money, a small bag of clothes, maybe $30, maybe, some of these places. But they're dropping them here because they know in New London, our homeless hospitality center will care for it. No.
Okay, we have 60 seconds left. I've been reminded. So each of you take 30 to 40 seconds, how people can find out about your campaign or be supportive. You know, are you looking for?
I have a face, I have a bunch of, I realize most people don't like to read as much as I put out there, so I have a Facebook page, I for New London. Just check out the Facebook page. I have all of the policy statements and ideas and things I've come up with on there, as well as local issues, so check that out.
I'm Grandma Zadik. You can find me everywhere. I'm on Facebook, I'm on TV, I'm on the radio. Look for me. Walk up to me on the street and say, hi, aren't you running city council? And I'll talk to you. And I'll be there for you.
Well, thank you, Erin. Thank you, Dot. Election Day is seven weeks away, so maybe we can do a round two.
Name and time.